Evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It is May 12th, 2025, and I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Spath.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chance.
Here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Councilmember Hackey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Strickla.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here. Right, next is the posting of the colors, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 14th council meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you. Next is the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Have several items here to make sure folks are aware of. This week is Member Appreciation Days at the Community Center. What that means primarily is members are able to bring a guest for free. There are a number of raffle prizes available, and each day there are different exclusive access opportunities, as well as games, character artists, food from local small businesses to recognize our premier members. Also, council is confirmed next Monday. We will have a meeting beginning at 4:00 p.m. That will consist of a walking tour of some city facilities, so make sure that you dress appropriately for that. We will meet here at 4:00. Also coming up is the May Chambers 10-year brand anniversary. They'll be celebrating that on Tuesday, May 20th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Also coming up later this month is Memorial Day. Offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th, in honor of Memorial Day. But as is traditional in Mason, there are a variety of opportunities specific to veterans throughout the month of May. That includes, early in the month, free admission at the community center to veterans and active military. This week, next week, a free round of golf and a meal at the Grizzly Golf Course. Throughout Memorial Day weekend, free access to the Mason Municipal Aquatic Center. And then in June, specifically on Saturday, June 7th, the city is again partnering with Casting Freedom for a fishing event for veterans and their families at Pine Hill Lakes Park from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It is free for veterans, but registration is required and can be done through the city's website. Also coming up, May is a busy month, as summer gets even busier. On Wednesday, May 28th, at 11:00 a.m., King's Local School District is breaking ground on the new high school. Any councilmembers that are available to attend, please let Jennifer know. Also on Thursday, June 5th, at 6:00 p.m., the Warren County Foundation is hosting its annual community service awards. Again, let Jennifer know if you're interested in attending. And then, June 6th begins the 2025 Music in Mason Series. That's Friday, June 6th, at 6:00 p.m. Begins seven concerts that are each held at the Downtown Plaza. Each concert has two acts, one begin at 6:00 p.m. and the second 8:00 p.m. In addition to the music, there are food trucks, exhibitors, kids' activities, as well as a partnership with the American Legion, the VFW for adult beverages. Proceeds from that benefit each of those organizations, as well as the Mason Parks and Rec Foundation. And then again this year, Mason Market on the Mile, which is hosted in partnership with Mayed CDC, is returning. Three markets are scheduled to take place in conjunction with the Music in Mason concerts, and those will be June 13th, June 27th, and July 18th. And again, that has proven very popular with local vendors, food producers, and artisans. They will be there from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on each of those days. That is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, next on the agenda is Near and Dear to My Heart. It is the Mason City Youth Council, which was created in 2024 to mimic the Mason City Council at the high school level. This group of future leaders has met throughout the school year to bring fresh perspective and innovative ideas to council. They created committees that mimic our committees here on council, and I was able to meet with them throughout the school year to help guide them. Each committee gave a presentation, and I invited them to present to some of our committees and to our city manager. The Mason Youth Council provides a platform to engage in local issues, empowering them to voice their opinions and to contribute to the decision-making of our city. These are our future Mason leaders. I would like to welcome up Sarah Wang and Desika Sudhar, who are responsible for creating and organizing and maintaining this organization throughout the year. They have done a lot to make this become successful, and I'm very proud of them. I am also very proud of the young men and women who have attended all of these meetings and worked so diligently in their committees. They have worked very hard this year, so let's give them all a round of applause. Do you want to go up to the podium? These ladies are going to present the individuals with a certificate from the city of Mason.
Okay, all right. So we're very proud of our members for everything they've done for us this year, and those of us who have chosen to attend today will be receiving their certificate from Mayor Nelson, as well as us. So first up, Kabir Aurora. Maria Ataya. Shreya Deshpande.
Excuse me, excuse me. If we could ask each of the members with their certificates to remain standing up here by the flags, we'd like to get a group picture at the end. Sorry.
All right. Ria Dulal. Aditi Garkapati. Vaishnavi Kavali. Kabir Kular. Sanke Nisha Pradeep. Vidhi Soni. Hansika Varakurappu. And Deepika Vishwanath.
Okay, if council could go up for a picture.
And lastly, Naya Shit.
Okay. I can call up the Mason School Foundation to the podium. We have a special surprise.
Thank you so much, Mayor, council, and city staff. We are thrilled, on behalf of the Mason City School District, William Mason High School, and the Mason Schools Foundation, to honor the 2025 distinguished alum from Mason High School, our very own councilmember Barbara Berry Spath, who of course is a proud alum through and through and has given back to her community in so many ways and is also joined by so many of members of her family who were here today. So I'd love to invite them to stand also and celebrate somebody who's very special to them. Barbara's life and leadership reflect the very heart of what it means to be a comet, steadfast in her service, tireless in her work ethic, and deeply rooted in the values of empathy, adaptability, and community. From the halls of Mason High School to a city hall, Barbara has made a lasting impact through every role she's taken on, as a social worker, an advocate, a mother, a colleague, and as a public servant. We're honored to celebrate this recognition tonight with her family and members of the community and know just how deserving she is. Congratulations, Councilmember Spath. We're thank you for continuing to make Mason proud.
On behalf of the entire Mason Schools Foundation Board, we want to honor you. This award is coming back after a 10-year hiatus. It was a very competitive field. There are a lot of Mason alums who are outstanding, and your nomination rose right to the top. We are so grateful for your family, for recognizing your contributions and joining us here today, and the fact that you continue to serve our community as a humble leader. We are so grateful and honored to recognize you. We'll also celebrate Councilmember Spath at graduation and in the fall as well. So the party will continue. Congratulations once again.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to say something, and then if I can get a picture with my family, I'd love to do that. And also, all of you. A couple weeks ago, these guys came to Kiwanis and actually surprised me then. And I'm going to tell you, I was very shocked and overwhelmed. I've never been surprised in my entire life, and this was a true surprise. I mean, I tell a funny story. My husband works at home on Thursdays, and when I left him, he was still sitting in his shorts and his t-shirt. And all of a sudden, then he was at Kiwanis. I'm like, what are you doing here, you know? But I just want to say, I'm just so grateful. I'm very thankful. I know there's so many other Mason graduates that deserve this more than I do. And I just feel very blessed that you're honoring me in this way. And I have to say thank you to my daughter, Tori. I know she wrote in the nomination. My husband, John, helped, and I just don't really know what to say. I just really feel very blessed and very honored and very grateful and just appreciative that you all are recognizing me in this way. And goes to say, I love my hometown. And that's my granddaughter yelling out there.
So if you guys could, the family, if the family could come up to get a picture. Okay, next is recognition.
Thank you to my family who came. You guys really, this is another nice surprise. Thank you.
Okay, next is the recognition of visitors. If anyone would like to come to the podium, we do have a five-minute time limit. Is there anyone here who wants to come to the podium to speak? Sir, if you could just state your name and your address when you get to the podium.
My name is Bob Sansoni, and I live at 6566 Bluegrass Way in Lexington Park. And I'm here to speak for two and a half minutes, give or take. At the last meeting, Jody, the city planner, did a good and accurate job explaining conditional use, except for paragraph 1172.03.c.3 that states, "Harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing or intended character of the general vicinity." How is harmonious and appropriate measured? I've been a mechanical engineer for 50 years, and I've never seen an instrument to measure harmonious and appropriate. This is a subjective opinion with no quantitative measure. The proposed building is shoehorned in between a beautiful church and single-family homes. The monolith, or big block structure, is not harmonious or appropriate in any sense. From the Mason City website, the Mason City Council is intended to represent the residents of Mason. The council is composed of elected representatives of the citizens, and their primary function is to enact laws and policies that address the needs and wishes of the residents, according to the city government's website. While the city council may consider the interests of businesses in their decision-making, their primary responsibility is to represent the general public. The city council voted to stop the marijuana dispensary several weeks ago and change the zoning, I believe that's the way you did it, to prevent it, because it did not fit Mason. We don't want to prevent the church from selling the property. If the development was like the Christian Village, single-family homes, or townhomes, or whatever you want to call them, we would not be having this discussion. We also don't want to stop assisted living for our older population, which I'm quickly becoming one of. If Mason needs more assisted living, there are other areas that could allow for an even larger facility that would look appropriate, such as up on King's Mill, Tyler'sville, there's many other areas. Look out your back windows and imagine seeing this for-profit hotel for the aging with all the associated infrastructure it requires, including building, driveways, lights, trash, delivery trucks, et cetera. If you'd like that out your back window, you know, that's what we're looking at. I have not heard from any person that is not associated with the church or developer that is in favor of this. That is the issue you should consider when voting, because you are voting on behalf of the residents of Mason, not the church, developer, or the city. It just does not fit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to come to the podium? No? All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2025-9. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Declaring May 2025 as Service Department Month in Mason.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. The service model was created several years ago, and it includes the engineering and building, the public utilities, and public works department, where all the departments work together on street maintenance, facility maintenance, many things that impact the daily lives of residents and businesses within the city of Mason on a daily basis. Most notably, probably, where we all work together is the snow and ice removal, where we get a lot of compliments on that service annually. There's a bunch of highlights in the memo. Anything from over 7,000 regulatory signs, which is hard to believe, are maintained within the city. Over 100 HVAC systems, our 13 million gallon a day water treatment plant, just to name a few. Resolution 2025-9 recognizes May as Public Service Department Month, and it helps to support, it recognizes the work that the department does to help support the safety, health, and well-being of the residents and businesses and visitors to Mason. Thank you.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yes.
Councilmember Strickla.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spath.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-10. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Proclaiming the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. For several years, the city of Mason has joined with communities across the nation. The week that May 15th falls in is designated as National Police Week and May 15th itself is National Peace Officer Memorial Day. Opportunity for the community to recognize the contributions of those in law enforcement, but maybe more significantly for those within law enforcement to recognize their fellow officers and the sacrifices they're sometimes made. Chief Wells had the opportunity to represent the city of Mason at the National Peace Officers Memorial Event in Washington, DC. But even better, we have Acting Chief, Captain Carly Dyer, here. Would like to ask her to come to stand and talk a little bit about this week.
Thank you for your time this evening, everyone, council. I am Captain Carly Dyer. I'm over patrol, the division of the Mason Police Department. As Mr. Hanson mentioned, I have the honor today of standing in as Acting Chief while our very own Chief Wells attends the FBI National Academy. Today, I come to deliver just a couple of remarks about National Police Week. I would first like to highlight a small signal of solidarity you will see during National Police Week. Across the nation, the Black Morning bands placed across officers' badges. These bands are worn to demonstrate unwavering support for law enforcement and commemorate those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. While we wear them proudly, it is not easy to ever slide them on our badges. We comprehend the bigger picture of what those bands represent. We have lived through numerous in the line of duty deaths, with 2024 bringing 165 deaths, and 2025, we are currently at 25 officers. While I've been in law enforcement and with the city now 19 years, it didn't process, the process, excuse me. I didn't process the totality of what my career entailed until May 10th, 2011. That was the day one of our own Warren County deputies, Sergeant Brian Dooley, was murdered while assisting in the apprehension of a fleeing suspect. Perspective and reality finally hit home for me as a law enforcement officer, as a teammate, as a wife, and a mother. Those moments of reflection don't stop with Sergeant Brian Dooley's death 14 years ago. I unfortunately had a front row seat at another deputy's death five years later, this time in Claremont County, Deputy Bill Brewer, on February 2nd, 2019. And again, these are moments I would never wish anyone to have to live through. I would be amiss if I didn't mention Deputy Larry Henderson, who has died on the heels of National Police Week, May 2nd, this very year, by simply directing traffic at UC's graduation. A death that has come with a lot of mixed emotions everyone is still unpacking as I speak. So while others may see just a small black band on our badge, to any officer, and now you, a city council, you see it means so much more. That is what Police Week is all about. It's a week of remembrance and honoring the fallen. It is a week of showing the survivors of these deaths that we will never forget and that they will never be forgotten and that we will forever be indebted to their loved ones who made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Let's take a moment of silence for our fallen officer, Officer Larry Henderson, as well as all of our other fallen heroes. Thank you. All right, I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
Captain Dyer, before you get out of here, I just want to say, you know, last week was a very solemn reminder of just how dangerous the job is that our police officers are doing. As a teenager, I lived next door to a Cincinnati police officer, and I was literally today just reading about his partner on patrol one night. Officer Bob Lally lost his life, and I can still remember that to this day. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you to our department, all of our officers, everyone who puts their life on the line for our freedom and our safety. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I've had the privilege of riding around with several of our officers in the city. And to your point, people don't understand the depth of what you guys deal with on a day-in-and-day basis. It's something that we should not take lightly, and it is something that, you know, is obviously, speaking of the 2024 folks that have passed away in the line of duty, that's something you guys show up and do every single day, day in and day out. And when I've had the great opportunity of riding around with our police officers, I'm always just in awe by the professionalism. They're always extremely courteous when they're dealing with folks in society that most people don't want to deal with. And I just want to say, you know, thank you so very much to each and every one of our officers for showing up day in and day out. And thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for what you said tonight, because I think that does give a glimpse to other folks of exactly how hard that would have to be, understanding the next day you still have to go do that with the news of the passing of a fellow officer. So a sincere gratitude from me. Thank you guys so much. Thank you guys so much.
Mayor?
I just simply want to say thank you. You know, we appreciate all the work that you put in, and we know what you put up with and your families put up with because this is a 24/7 job. Just so thank you very much.
And we're the fourth safest place to live, so if everyone out there understands that, that's pretty sweet.
That's right. I'll be very brief as well, and thank you for your words tonight, and just we are so, so grateful for you and the entire team, grateful for all the work that you
We do feel very honored to have such great men and women serving our city. You guys do a phenomenal job, so thank you for everything you do and thank you for risking your lives to keep our community safe. All right, I need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-11. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Proclaiming the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, to continue the theme for tonight, we would like to also recognize EMS Week, which we will celebrate May 18th through the 24th with the theme, "We Care for Everybody." EMS Week provides, again, the opportunity to recognize the impact that emergency medical services have on the quality of life in our community. Providers include not only Mason's EMT and paramedic personnel, but also hospital emergency personnel, emergency physicians, nurses, and as well as educators. They all contribute to our comprehensive emergency medical system that protects the health, welfare, and safety of the Mason community. Last year, Mason's EMS personnel responded to over 3,800 calls. That's almost, that's approximately 11 per day. Calls for EMS services have increased 33% over the past five years. Recognizing the increase in calls and the impact it would place on emergency response times over the past three years, the city has been piloting a program for additional ambulance. In 2023, that pilot program was fully implemented, placing a third ambulance, medic 53, into service 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Placing a third medic into operation has helped the city to continue to align emergency response times with our national standards. Community engagement and public education are part of the department's proactive approach to community safety. Educating the community to understand risk, prevent hazards, and respond effectively to crisis situations helps reduce incidents, saves lives, as well as resources. In 2024, Mason's EMS providers taught CPR and AED training to 492 people in the community, more than doubling the number of individuals trained in 2023. Additional community services that the department offers includes car seat installation, the File of Life Program, first aid training, and Stop the Bleed. EMS Week is the opportunity for the community to recognize the efforts of our city's EMS personnel. With that, Resolution 2025-11 is recommended for adoption. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-12. This is the first reading, and I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Adopting the budget of the city of Mason for the year January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2026.
Eric?
Yes, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a first reading. We'd like to have public hearing for June 9th, 2025. And just remind everyone, I spend more time telling folks what this isn't because of the unfortunate title of this is, this is not the budget for the city of Mason. This is an administrative item that helps the city justify the receipt of local government funds as we go through this process. The budget process for the city of Mason for 2026 will occur later this year.
Okay, thank you. All right, onto ordinance 2025-23. I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of a conditional use permit to allow a convalescent nursing and rest home on an R3 zoning property at 6546 Mason Montgomery Road, Heritage Presbyterian Church.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a sec to sort of set the stage procedurally for where we are tonight. This is, it's not often that conditional uses come before council, and it's not often that they're then tabled and held over to the next meeting. So I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page of where we are procedurally. So if you remember, at the last meeting, you, council conducted a public hearing. The public hearing was closed, and now it was tabled, and now it's back on your agenda for tonight. Once you have an appropriate motion in place, then it is appropriate for council discussion. I would like to just address a couple of other things, only that because I know that they were raised in some correspondence with the city related to some council members abstaining from the vote. So to be clear, just a couple of things. One, pursuant to the charter of the city, the mayor is the presiding officer at council. The mayor is a council member, but because of the way the charter is worded, presides at the meetings. All that really means is that, as you've seen tonight, the mayor runs the meeting, announces the agenda items, opens public hearings, closes public hearings. Those functions as the presiding officer are purely ministerial for the mayor. So whoever sits in this seat as the mayor does those things. In the event, though, that the mayor chooses to abstain on a particular vote, that's fine, but it does not preclude the mayor from still performing those ministerial functions of just running the meeting, calling the agenda. So we wanted to be clear on that. When any council member does choose to abstain on a matter, what that essentially means is either because of a specific legal conflict of interest or a perceived conflict, they've decided that it would be more appropriate that they not participate and not vote on a matter. And that's certainly within any council member's right to make that call on their own. What it means, though, is if you are going to abstain, that you don't participate in any of the discussions. Obviously, you don't vote. But again, it does not preclude that just ministerial function of, you know, calling the agenda and keeping things moving on the agenda. So if council has any questions, I'm happy to address them. Other than that, I think it's appropriate for council to move forward on this item.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted Jeff to kind of explain that because we did get an email. There was a concern that we took serious, and I just wanted to say that I, usually you have, you are required to abstain if there's a financial benefit to you, and there is no financial benefit to me, so technically, I really didn't have to abstain. But in order to not blur the lines of objectivity, I decided it would be best to abstain because it is a church that I belong to. But if I, I just want to assure you that I have not, you know, carried on conversations with people and been involved in discussions, and I certainly won't be voting tonight. So hopefully, that puts you at ease if you had any concerns. Okay, with that being said, we're going to, I guess, continue council discussion and then vote on it. Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to say upfront too as well, I will be abstaining on this vote as well. I have several family members who belong to the Heritage Presbyterian Church, and I would never want to do anything to make the church look bad in any way. I don't want anybody to think that I'm voting in favor of the church, or I don't want anybody to think that I'm purposely voting against the church because of my family members. So I just think it's in my best interest not to participate in this particular instance as well. So I will be abstaining, and I just want to say that upfront as well. And as you all know, Jim Speth, who's my brother-in-law, he spoke at the public hearing. And so I have several other members who are members of the church, so I just want to make that clear as well.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to do a motion to adopt before we do council discussion. So I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Okay, now we can continue with council discussion. Does any council, yes?
Yeah, Mayor, I do. Yeah, this is, this is certainly kind of a different procedural situation for me as well as after our last public hearing. I called a meeting with staff and sat down with them and understood that this is, I've been on council now for nine and a half years, and this is really the second conditional use that I've ever had to deal with. And the other one was the same night, or last meeting. There was another one, but it actually, there was, it was same property with two different conditional uses back in 15, I believe, or 16, something like that. So procedurally, it was, it was, it was a little confusing to me in understanding, and I wanted to thank staff for sitting down with me to better understand this, and I feel like I have a much better grasp on it. And Bob, thank you for standing up because I think last time I mentioned I'm a pretty limited government guy, and, you know, a quote by Gerald Ford comes to kind of mind that a government big enough to take anything or give you everything is also the same one that can take everything away from you. And understanding how this conditional use applications work, if the conditional use application is approved, then the application needs, it meets all the requirements of the zoning code, it must be approved. And based on some of the information that I heard at the public hearing, I did have some questions if the application meets all the requirements. And it's a balancing act because we also have an obligation to protect private property rights. So we need to find a way to, as I mentioned, to balance those fundamental property rights while still protecting the rights of the surrounding property owners. And I believe, and especially after hearing the concerns and meeting with staff, the best way to strike that balance is to see if there are additional conditions that we can impose on the project to ensure that it meets the standards of our zoning code. And so, Jordy, I think you have, so what I would like to do is consider adding, there's six additional conditions for the approval of this application. And Bob, the six that I came up with, the first one is harmonious, and they're going to be up here. I don't, I don't like to read to adults, but I can if we have to. Can you put those up, Jordy?
They're on the computer.
The first one, I can kind of surmise them. Harmonious in the general vicinity, I, you know, I'm requesting that there is four-sided architecture and two third brick with pitched or similar style roof. The second is, I heard the, to ensure the impacts, a development do not disturb existing or future neighboring uses, that a six-foot tall fence shall be constructed. I have them up here, so. Excessive noise, that is addressed in three. The glare is something that we tried to address in four. The impact on the surrounding traffic, I know the developer mentioned that, and I just wanted to understand and make sure that that is in the conditions. And then also that the neighboring properties remain, that we are going to put an additional row of the evergreen trees just to try to, to put some sort of barrier up. So these are the conditions that I would love for council to look at and consider, and if it is appropriate, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to add conditions one through six as part of the approval of the conditional application. And if there's any questions, Jordy is here to answer it. I mean, I think I did a, or Jeff is kind of the legality issue that really walked me through a lot of this stuff as well.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend. Do you all, does everybody need a moment to read all of this? No? Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
Yes. Second.
Do we do a roll call?
Well, yeah, so now you have a motion. Again, I don't mean to, because this is a different procedure than usual, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So right now, you have a motion to amend to add those conditions with a second, and it would be appropriate to have council discussion, but this discussion is just limited to the amendment, so the idea of adding these conditions, so, yeah, it would be appropriate for council discussion on the conditions.
Yes. Councilmember Hackey?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, kind of a procedural question to start. So I'm on planning commission, and I know the original plans that came through. There was a pitched roof on this, and I know you're proposing a pitched roof in condition Are we able to ask questions of the developer at this point? Or I saw the last meeting, I know the process that you outlined then, since this is not a public hearing?
Correct. It's not a public hearing. If you have questions, I think it might be best to address them to staff first, and if staff can answer them, then that, hopefully, that would be sufficient rather than questions directly with the applicant.
Okay. I guess, Jordy?
Do my best.
So I know originally the plan was to do a, you know, the rezone for this property because the roof was going to be taller than the allowed amount in the normal zoning.
Correct.
That became an issue with this property because making it a three-story and having the pitched roof took it above the limit. So that was withdrawn, and now we're at a height that is within the conditional use. So how does, I don't even know if this is possible now because of the changes that were made and the reasons for the changes. So I guess, where are we on this?
Yeah, so to Vice Mayor Chance's previous point, a part of the discussion that happened in the public hearing was the developer proposed a, I'm going to call it a half-pitched roof, so it's not a full-pitched roof where it meets at a point, but they did propose, I assume it will be a flat-top building, but a sort of a semi-pitched roof. So to the neighboring residents or to someone walking by or on Tyler'sville, it would appear as a pitched roof, not a flat-roof building, but it would not meet that full point. So in Vice Mayor Chance's conditions and then in conversations with staff, that's part of why comma or similar was included in those conditions. So pitched or similar would allow it to be that sort of semi-pitched roof, give the appearance while not being a traditional where it fully meets at the point.
Mayor?
Yes.
What are the requirements, if any, for the berm itself? I know that these propose a fence at the base of the berm and planting on it. What, are there requirements for the berm itself, height, width, that kind of thing?
So we, Vice Mayor Chance didn't propose any. We didn't discuss those in our meeting. There is an existing berm that runs along pretty much the entire perimeter of the property with landscaping on top of it. Vice Mayor Chance thought that was a decent screening, but he wanted to see more, and so that's where that fence came in. So that would be a six-foot opaque fence along the east and southern, on the church's side of the berm. And then to screen that fence from Tyler'sville and Mason Montgomery, another row of evergreen trees between the fence and the church.
But there's no requirements for the berm itself?
No.
There's a couple places where it's lower, and so I wonder if it might be appropriate to add some requirements for that, to build it up where it's low so that it's consistently high all the way around.
Are you making a motion to add that?
I'm putting it out for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we looked at that, and we were, what our approach was, we want to make it consistent. And the, I mean, I think the topography, when you say low, it certainly, it flows down, but I don't think it's visually to where you're going to be able to tell a major difference of, to where it's going to look like this, right? Is that Is that, to the berm?
Well, I didn't walk all the way around on the church side to look, but it seemed, it seemed when I've looked at, it's not, the berm is not consistently high behind all of the homes. Like it, it does a little bit of this, which maybe it's following the ground, but it seemed like, I could see there were some spots up and maybe that's what the fence and the planting is for, but. You feel like this would cover?
Yeah, I think the spirit of this is to cover that, especially with the other, the other side of the evergreens. On this side of the berm, that would, I would think, help also offset some of the, you know, the berm, yeah, the, the berm not looking even per se.
I am not making a motion to amend the amendment.
Okay.
To be clear.
All right. Any other council discussion on the amendment only? Okay, we need a roll call for the amendment.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Spath?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Okay, again, just procedurally, that means the motion to amend passed. You've already made a motion to adopt with a second and now the amendment has, because the amendment has passed, the motion to adopt is essentially now, you don't need a new motion, it's now a motion. What you're considering is adopting the ordinance with this amendment to be included. And we're back to council discussion just on the overall adoption now.
Thank you. All right, so council discussion. Okay, yes?
I'll, I'll just, excuse me, I'll just be brief. I thank Vice Mayor, I appreciate the work that you've put into this, appreciate these additional conditions that you've put together. I think this is a difficult, this is a tough decision because I, I think what we're talking about are two major groups of community members, both residents and members of the church, the church itself as a community member. And it's hard, while balancing, like what Vice Mayor said, the protection of private property rights and not seeing conditional use permits come through very often. So this, this was just, for me, it was a, it was a, it was a difficult process to go through, a difficult decision to make as we walked through this and, and understand that from the resident's side, we, we heard you, we understood what you were saying, the concerns that you brought up were valid, traffic concerns, safety concerns, pedestrian concerns, walking through, water drainage, all of those, I think Vice Mayor Chance put together was, was a great balance, if you will, at least to get us as close as we possibly could do that, so I appreciate that. And I just want to let you know, we did hear you and we heard what you were saying.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any council discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Spath?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
The ordinance passes with the additional conditions.
Okay, thank you. All right, ordinance 2025-45, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Approval of the record plat for Red Viking, section one.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a plat for a piece of property that is on Central Park Boulevard, it's owned high-tech and it's at 7288 Central Park Boulevard. This plat essentially just takes that one lot and breaks it up into two lots that are both over five acres in size. This went to Planning Commission May 6th and is recommended for adoption.
Thank you, Kurt. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call please.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-46, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to increase the amount authorized for a cooperative agreement with the Warren County Commissioners for Mason Marrow Mill Grove Road Bridge Replacement and Bike Path Connection.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. As Jeff mentioned, this is to increase the authorization. Originally, when we had the, the cooperative agreement that's used in the Ohio Public Works Commission grant submittal, it was prior to design of the bridge even being done, so there was an estimate and that was back in 2022. Project was awarded over eight hundred, almost $900,000 in OPWC funds. We also got $140,000 from Ohio Jobs and Commerce towards the project and they just opened bids on it in January, was just over $2 million. Our involvement in the bridge, it's a Warren County bridge, so they're responsible for replacing it. Our involvement was to widen the bridge so that we could get a bike path across that will connect from the Mason Sports Park over to the subdivisions in that area and run the new, a new bike path along the front of the water reclamation plant. Our financial responsibility for the project will be around $650,000. The budget included $700,000 for construction of this project. And then if I could, I'd like to talk about 47 as well. And that is somewhat related because as part of the bridge widening project and the bike path installation, the fence that's, that you see along the front of the water reclamation plant, that black fence, will need to be relocated back to allow for that bike path to be installed. And we have gates, there's two gates that access, for access to the water reclamation plant. Both of those gates are 20 years old and are starting to fail, we can't get parts for them, they've been a, a big problem for us, especially during the winter months. So we asked both the company that does the maintenance on the gates and the subcontractor for the bridge project to give us quotes. When we prepared the packet, we didn't have the quote back from Mills Fencing that is the subcontractor for the, the bridge project and their quote was actually less and so we'll be able to award, if this is passed, we'd be able to award that to that contractor and save additional funds on the replacement of both of those gates. We did on that ordinance, 47 include an emergency clause. The quotes that we've been getting on aluminum and aluminum gates, things like that, people have been putting on their quotes 15 days and so we have an emergency clause on that to be able to sign the contract and order those gates. So with that, ordinance 2025-46 and 47 are both recommended for adoption and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kurt. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Need a motion to adopt? Any council discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Ordinance 2025-47, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the replacement of the entry gates at the water reclamation plant in an amount not to exceed $80,000 and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-48, I need a motion to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Vander West of Cincinnati Inc. for median irrigation and landscaping replacement.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you. The medians were added originally really for a safety improvement for our major arterial roadways. They've really become a signature aesthetic feature for the Mason community and many of those medians and the irrigation system in the medians are over 20 years old and have significant maintenance issues. We often get calls from sprinkler heads and spraying people's cars as they drive past or going on during the day when they should not be running. So what we've done is over the last three or four years, we've replaced some of the irrigation equipment within those medians and this year, the focus would be on the Western Row Road medians from east of Tylersville Road and then that basically east of Tylersville Road is between Tylersville and the interstate. And then on Mason Montgomery Road between Lexington Park and Financial Way. The new system has a flow valve monitor, so it allows us to, if something were to happen to the system and there would be flow at a time when it wasn't scheduled, that would alert staff and we'd be able to take action more proactively for, for items like that. Vander West is a Mason-based company, they've done the replacement for us the last several years, they provide excellent service and they've been able to do a lot of this work without damaging a lot of the landscaping, which saves us additional funds while doing this work, so they're very careful about it. Ordinance 2025-48 would authorize $80,000 for this irrigation replacement work. We did have $125,000 in the 2025 budget scheduled and I'll answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Quick question.
Yes.
Will the system have the ability to turn itself off if it's raining?
Yeah, it should. There's, right now, a lot of our systems have like a, a little sensor that catches the rainwater. I think this one will be tied into the weather forecast in the area and be more sophisticated, so it won't rely on, because some of those sensors get filled with dirt and debris and different things and aren't really effective, so this should be a much better system.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you so much for addressing this because you want to understand how many people talk to me about this and I'm one of them. Because you go get your car washed and you're cruising down and next thing you know, you're going through water, so thank you for doing this.
All right, any other council discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-49, I need a motion to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Stauffer Site Services LLC for the Grizzly Golf Course Drainage Improvements Project in the amount of $60,000.
Kurt?
Yes, thank you. This is a project that was in the budget as well, really a couple of nagging issues out at the, at the golf course. There's, if you're familiar with the course, between hole eight and nine, there, there are two tunnels, one is under Fairway Drive and one is under Sports Center Complex Drive. Between those two tunnels is very, very flat, so anytime we have rain, the water just sits in that area. It is really bad on the cart path, there's a bunch of potholes there that we try to address, but they, they just keep coming back. So what this project will do is be able to drain this water away from that area and give it some relief and then that asphalt path that's been problematic between the two tunnels will replace it with a concrete path in that area and so hopefully make it a much better experience for users of the course. In addition, there is some, there's been actually two water main breaks over in that area that have generated some significant water draining through the course over towards the condominiums. The, the spoils from this, this dirt work will be able to be used over in that area to help direct some of that water away from the condos that are on the east side of Hole Nine. We did get a couple quotes on this, Stauffer Site Services was the lowest and best bid that we received and ordinance 2549 would authorize this contract. We expect to do this work either this summer if we can or this fall and be complete by the end of the year. So with that, any questions that you have, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt. Any council discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Speth?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-50, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Lutz Construction for the replacement of four showers in the family locker room at the Mason Community Center in an amount not to exceed $55,000.
Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, if you don't mind, I'd like to cover the next two ordinances because both are related to the city's reinvestment into one of the most successful community assets that we have, which is the Mason Community Center. And two of the most highly used areas within that facility, which are the locker room and the fitness floor. Built in 2003 and expanded in partnership with TriHealth in 2010, the facility is home to health, fitness and wellness to over 2,000 visitors on a daily basis. The locker rooms are original to the facility and built in 2003, as I indicated previously, and they were built in a fashion that's similar to a high school locker room and very institutional. And while they did receive a mild facelift in 2010, they have significantly aged from use and the environment. They continue to receive the most concerns from members. While an extensive redesign and redevelopment is needed, it will be costly and require significant planning and scheduling. Ultimately, it might mean closing for sure the pools, but other areas of the facility as well, and so we need to take a step back and really look at what that would look like moving forward. While it does remain a long-term initiative, it's just not feasible at this time. The showers are likely the worst amenities in the locker room. There are a total of 18 showers in the men's, women's and the families locker room. Staff secured a quote to replace all 18 showers at a cost of $300,000. Staff is recommended moving forward with a phased approach for replacing the showers. Back in 2010, when we did the mild remodeling of the locker rooms, we were faced with many construction challenges, things that we didn't know, the things that kept popping up. And obviously, it's a business operation, we want to try to get that facility open as quickly as possible. So we'd like to start off with that phased approach, replacing four showers, see how the workmanship goes, as well as any difficulties that may be encountered during the construction. We are hoping to perform the work during the annual indoor pool maintenance enclosure. However, should the work require additional time, by only remodeling four of those showers at this time, we'll keep the other two locker rooms hope, open throughout the construction. $300,000 was included in the 2025 budget for this year. Next is ordinance 2025-51, which is our annual replacement of fitness floor equipment. Last year, council approved over $250,000 and replaced a third of the equipment on the fitness floor. Before you tonight, is a request for $70,000 replacing three elliptical machines, three treadmills, one step machine, one cross trainer and one plate-loaded Smith machine. These machines are all 10 to 20 years old. Again, the fitness floor remains one of the most highly used areas of the center. Investing in the replacement of the equipment as well as additional equipment that is next generation in the industry is significant to keeping and growing memberships at the center. With that, ordinance 2025-50 and 51 are recommended for adoption. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
What is the plan for families while this project is underway? Like if I'm, if I'm a mom and I've got little boys, or I'm a dad and I have little girls, the family... and I've got little boys, or I'm a dad and I have little girls, the family restroom is perfect for that. But what are we going to do for families in the meantime?
Yeah, it's really great.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, as a new Silver Sneakers member of the community center, I'm excited about these upgrades, because I'm getting ready to get fit.
Okay. Any other council discussion?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes. Are you excited, too?
Silver Sneakers over there.
Councilmember Stricula thinks I should be a Silver Sneakers member as well. But I am actually a premier member, and I have begun going there, and I'm excited about the changes. The equipment that I've been using is exceptional. And I know this is one of the only municipal community centers that's not in the red. Isn't that what you've said, Mr. Hanson?
The only.
The only.
And until someone corrects me, that's true.
I have no information to dispute that. So anyway, this is exciting. Thank you. I thought you looked like you'd been working out. Yeah, I knew it.
Nice. Impressed. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-51, I need a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Design to Wellness for Fitness Equipment for the Mason Community Center in an amount not to exceed $70,000 and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to suspend the rule and allow for adoption after the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? I need a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
All right, now it is time for committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
Sorry, the peanut section over here. I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of the Board of Veterans Affairs. We had a meeting the other day, if that's all right with my fellow members, Councilmember Stricula and Vice Mayor Chance. We did discuss the coming anniversary of the end of World War II, which is September 2nd, thank you, and looking at doing some things for the World War II veterans. It's, what, the 75th anniversary? 80th anniversary? That's right, 80th of the end. So staff is looking into ways that we can honor them. It's going to be a little bit difficult. Most of the population that are World War II veterans that are still with us may have some mobility issues and other health issues that may make it a little difficult to do. It will be difficult to do anything on the scale of what we did for the Vietnam veterans recently, but we still want to honor them in an appropriate way. So we're working on that.
Yes.
Sorry, can I just add to that, just real, real quick?
Absolutely.
Kind of fits, I think, within the committee report. You were not here at the last meeting when we recognized Mark Baseman for his work on the Vietnam Veterans event, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't thank you as well for your work on it and the efforts that you put in in building this from that kind of conversation that you had with him. So just thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Honored to be there and be a part of that and just...
Well, thank you. And if I may, Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to speak on this during Old and New, but no, 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 no. Absolutely glad you brought it up, and thank you. I appreciate that. When we started doing the planning for the Vietnam veterans celebration, it didn't even dawn on me that we had international travel scheduled during that time to go visit family in England. So I was devastated that I was not going to be able to be here for that. My uncle was a Vietnam veteran. He passed away while he was still in active duty, not in Vietnam, but, you know, it was, it was a very, very difficult thing. So thank you to everybody who picked up the banner and carried that on and did exactly what we wanted to do and honor the Vietnam veterans. So thank you.
Well, you were missed, that's for sure. But you did a lot to help that come to fruition, so we do appreciate all your work. Okay, any other committee reports?
Mayor, can I just ask a question in relation to this? Since you guys are doing this in September, will the, will the Legions still be putting on their regular event in November? Haven't, there'll be another's? Okay, so there'll be September and November. Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that, just to kind of elaborate a little more, too, on what these guys missed, is, we talked about, you know, with that population, is how can we possibly combine it with another event? Because with the Vietnam veterans, we penned 101 Vietnam veterans, which is the most, I believe, that they've been able, they've recorded since they've been doing this type of programming. And, but understanding, I think they're going to have to be in their 90s, I believe, if, you know, with World War II. So we talked about how can we go to them and possibly put together a video and then share it. We kind of condensed a little timeline. I think Jenna freaked out a little bit. But including it or bolting on to another celebration that we're putting together, because it, it would be hard to put on the type of program we did for the Vietnam veterans, but we certainly want to honor them. And so we're kind of working through that, too, to how could we maybe put a video up, even at, I'm going to speak it into the universe a little bit, Red Rhythm and Boom as well. So that's when Jenna really freaked out. So, but we can do it. We've seen what we've been able to accomplish before.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to add to that, just because of the importance of the World War II veterans, because we're losing them every day. And there are so few left. And so I would echo time is of the essence for this. And so the video idea is, I think, is a great idea. We do have, I'm sure there's several in this community still, and I would love to capture that. And Jenna is not here, so I think we can push that timeline through without her approval. Right, Jennifer?
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, on to old and new business.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I heard from a resident constituent earlier, well, I guess it was last week, about two bills that have been introduced into the Ohio House and Senate. She's very concerned about them. Do I need to, is that better? No. That's better. Okay. They are called the, oh, let me find it again. Oh, it closed out of that all completely. They are, they're almost identical bills, the Ohio Property Protection Act. And this, this resident is a member of the Chinese community here in Mason, and she specifically called out that under the reading of the House bill as it stands, it would prohibit anyone who is here legally from China and other, other countries of concern from owning or purchasing land. This is individuals as well as business entities, so it would jeopardize our Chinese church, Chinese school, and all of the, those who are here on work visas, for example, who work at PNG. The Senate bill goes even further and says that if you currently own property, you have to sell it within two years. So she wanted to know if there was anything that we, as a city, could do to influence these bills to be less dire. That she shared some examples of letters of testimony that have been sent by other cities or entities. So the city of Moraine is the headquarters of Fuyao, which took over the GM plant after GM sold. So Moraine said, you know, we've been through the loss of a major manufacturing facility. It devastated our community. Fuyao came in, they now make and sell almost all the automotive glass in the entire country. If that, if this, these bills were to pass, that business would have to leave the state, devastating Moraine and also causing all kinds of issues with that business, with that manufacturing process. I, I'm concerned about it. I, it's almost hard to believe what I'm reading, though, so I would like to see if we could explore further, find out what exactly it's doing. And then if there is cause for concern, then determine what makes sense moving forward to see if we can mitigate harm.
Okay. Eric, do you think you could get some information on that and email that out to us? Because I think most of us haven't really heard much about this.
I know, Jeff, yes. I think working with Jeff, I can't do it all on my own, but Jeff, I know, has done some research. We can contact our, our government strategies group, maybe even contact some of our congressmen, try and get our arms around. I think the hard part, and what Councilmember Bennett's talking about, often these state proposals are moving targets a little bit and trying to get what the, what gets defined in the ordinance and when it's ready for a vote. So yes, we'll endeavor, knowing that it will be a moving target.
Okay, right.
It's currently in committee on both sides, and so I know things can, you know, languish there and hopefully disappear sometimes. So I don't think it's a hugely urgent thing, but I just want to, I'd like to know what's happening. I think we need to keep an eye on it and maybe take some action down the road.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have old and new business they'd like to talk about? Yes, Councilmember Hackey?
Yeah, if you'll indulge me, I want to go back to the Vietnam veterans thing again real quick. I just want to say, you know, Mark Baseman and I may have been a catalyst in getting this going, but our staff just nailed it. I watched the whole thing, sitting in my brother-in-law's house. I was just blown away. I was absolutely blown away. You know, there was talk about the nasty weather we had and the community support that we still had to come out and honor these guys. I've got several friends who are Vietnam veterans. These guys came back from war and were not treated well. So this was just an amazing, amazing tribute to them and our staff. Jenna, Eric, Jennifer, everyone from them down who did all the work, our police, I believe our fire department was involved. Everyone just took it to the hilt. It was unbelievable. So I want to personally thank publicly everyone involved for all the work that they did to make that one of the best events the city's ever seen. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to give a shout out to the great 18 Restaurant out at the Grizzly. As we all know, there are lots of big changes happening out there, and good chance that this is the last time you can enjoy the patio the way it is today. And Alan Burns is back as the restaurant manager. And there's also a new employee that she was actually in my class, and, and she is a chef. And the menu is much improved from last summer. I'm just going to say, it went on a little hiatus last summer, but the, the menu has already, like, is so much better, and it's so much fun out there. When the weather is nice, I would encourage everyone to get out there and enjoy that patio one last time, because probably it is the last summer for the patio the way it is today. And it's, it's a wonderful environment, so.
Okay. Good to know. All right, anyone else? Okay, now it is time for recognition of visitors. Would anyone like to approach the podium to speak? None of you guys over there? You're so quiet. All right, well, then, moving on.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps we should give a round of applause to the Boy Scouts for sitting through the entire meeting.
Yes. Are you guys here for a badge? To get a badge, yes. Okay.
Not just because you wanted to come hang out with us tonight? Oh, okay. Thanks for being here.
Okay. Next is time for executive session for the acquisition and disposition of property. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing acquisition and disposition of property.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Spath?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hackey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stricula?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.